A five acre gravel pit with no restrictions. Now it was area of disturbance. Certain dates, one of the gravel pits had like a two month window like in January and February that we could use the material out of which didn't do us any good.
And Bill, that had to do with Sage Brown's different things and also the turnover with BLM. They kind of lacked enough people and one hand didn't know what the other one was doing and so things were not moving forward.
Yes, sir, like you put, and then a new person.
Well, I just, I wanted people to know it's not on our county people that were trying to get this done, that that was not the issue. Because some of these went in a year ahead of time to try and be permitted.
And then BLM brought in a new gal, transferred in Elizabeth, I don't recall her last name. So we were getting these five gravel pits done a year. In the process of four weeks, she probably had 12 gravel pits done, ones that were backlog or that had restrictions, she went back and like, these restrictions are not you guys' fault, we're gonna go back and reissue those permits exactly like they were. So we went from, anyway, they were done just in like a month. I was amazed that we've been having meetings with them continually and all of a sudden problem was taken care of. We've replaced some road signs, culverts and cattle guards and delineators throughout the county. We took one of the graders to Salt Lake City for repairs. We've hauled some 960 tons of chips to Lund because we will chip all of the Lund roads, asphalt roads, this summer. And then the agreement with the city county is a 74 and a half hours, which hasn't changed for months. It's not part of your backup material, but I'm gonna take the opportunity, so for risk mitigation for COVID-19 for the road department, we've staggered our breaks and lunches. So that would affect our operators because of the small table they met, now they just stagger theirs out so that we, two at a time. Our morning lineout is done via texting or that afternoon before, so the operators can come in, they already know where they're going, they'll come into the biz to the road department, they'll grab their grease, staff, whatever they need, and out the door they go. We no longer travel to job sites together in one vehicle, now we take two. We, on a daily basis, we clean door handles, journal handles, toilet handles, those kind of things. We are looking at staggering some work schedules, there's a couple mechanics that might move from Monday through Thursday on tents to Tuesday through Friday. All front, the front access doors are locked and we have stored us some signage and a doorbell, so if somebody wants to come in to see me or Naomi or Martin, they just need to ring the bell and then we'll allow them in. That just kind of controls how many people's in there at a time. We do some things different with payroll and picking up of hours. They all used to kind of congregate and do their time cards, now we got them separated on that. We're not gonna do any seasonal hiring this fiscal year and we also have a drop box outside for the mail and any freight that comes in that's small. Okay? And then in our attachments, the pitchers, this is my favorite part to watch you guys turn your head sideways. Number one is the, is the new semi we received. The second pitcher is the women's restroom and the third is the men's restroom. We totally remodeled those.
Looks great.
Yeah, they look, they really do, maintenance did a great job. That's one of those things that we come before, we track those hours that the maintenance does for the road department and then the road department will reimburse hours and those kind of things. So my idea was we will kind of build some hours up that the road department owes the maintenance and we use those hours for repairs towards Merritt Field to help get those parking lots in shape. The general fund or the maintenance department, they don't have those kinds of tools to do those things. We received our new truck, this pitcher number four. And pitcher number five, we upgraded all the lighting in the main shop area. We actually eliminated half of the lights and they went from T8 with ballast to four, eight foot fixtures, now they're four foot fixture, half the fixtures and their LEDs. So the payback on those lights will be, I bet, two to three years, plus no maintenance to continually change ballast and those kind of things. Any questions for me?
Anyone got anything for Bill? Very good.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, the second item under the road commission is the discussion of possible action approval of the minutes from the road commission meeting on the 22nd, 2020. Anybody got additions, subtractions, corrections? Here we go, motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Shane, the second by Lori. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We got a few minutes, Bill, while you're on the roll.
Sure.
Let's go to you. Page four, department heads, and we'll get you taken care of here. Page four, department heads, I have sheet one, Bill Calderwood, Public Works Director. I have made a discussion for possible action, the approval to adjust Camp Success fees and all.
This was something that came up in the budget discussions and it was the price comparison for Camp Success and I provided the cost for what the county is currently for Camp Success. And then I, in the sheet one, we do a $200 non-refundable deposit. So if somebody cancels within the, within that 30 day window, we do not give them back their, their money. And that was kind of the concern, we had somebody canceling at the last minute. That has never happened. Courtney's really good about in January, she starts calling and seeing if they're ready to go. I, just for note, I put on there the $175 is what we, it costs if you purchase your insurance locally for the liability, so that is another cost for the renters. And then you can see on that first sheet that it's kind of broke up by the amount of individuals and how that, what those costs are daily. And we have our agreement with the county and then, I'm not sure, I apologize, I don't know what page it is, but we also have what the Lions Club was charging for La Moelle and this was in 2016, I believe. So they have the comparable rates for what was done at La Moelle. I have been there, but I've never been to the camp and I don't think it's quite apples to apples because it's my understanding, they had small cabins that were there available where we dumped for actual camp. So I don't know what the direction you'd like to go with this. Stay as put. So Camp La Moelle is Sunday to Friday is 450 a day up to 50 campers and then the weekends at La Moelle in 2016 from Friday noon to Sunday was 650 a day for campers. And then you can see how that rate increases after they get additional people above 50.
Anybody got a suggestion or comment on how we, these fees should be structured?
So just look at, this year's budget income is 15,000 and we're showing 3700. So whatever math to shore that up.
That's, that was full last year too, there wasn't, there was just a handful of days, no weekends that were available. So it's pretty, that's pretty much what the income would be every year unless there's some kind of.
How many weeks, like 12 weeks or more than that?
I don't know, we pushed the rates in half, like we'll keep it running through September if the weather allows us.
Project revenue is 15,000 and the loss is 3700, 18,700.
Take 70 days and see what the fee would be for the 70 days and get to that 3750.
You always have a certain number.
But just use the 70 day barometer because starting at 90 and then see what it costs to get to the 3750, so 70 and the 3750 would be $52, $53. So let's, let's look at raising it $60, I mean, that's just why I said, you guys are correct, you guys were talking. Let's look at raising it $60 per day because it's, if we do that, it's 53, so we just go to $60, which is $7 above what we, you know, we took it to 70 days. Am I, am I making sense here? So we go from $53 to $60 and that should cover the 3750 deficit plus maybe a few extra dollars, not a, not a heck of a, it's not gouging anybody either. We don't, we aren't in a position to lose money.
It is a beautiful.
I understand.
I think, I even at 100, you're probably seventy-five, so I'm just taking around 100 and we're still way under, under the cost for, they were doing it at La Moelle, even with a few cabins. It's still a very reasonable, when you consider the scope and size of that facility and the services that are available, I think if you just went up 100 across the board, then we'd have to look at what we want to do on the weeklies and, how do you feel about that?
So that would be 100 and how many renters in there this summer?
What are most of your groups, Bill?
How many days is it, do you do any weeklies?
We, we do, we have some in the middle of the week, that's the only.
No, I mean, they take the entire week, the seven days.
I think she has that or I have that on the back, there is a few groups that do take the week. You recall, we brought that first ride of refusal and that's slowly starting to drop out, so that'll, that'll be, you know, that'll give people within the community a better opportunity to use that camp, so that'll be good. If you look at the schedule, it's on there for June, there's a few open weekends, but not, not a lot.
And if we do create a little extra revenue, it gives us money for improvements down the road, I mean, we can, we can down the road, bring some of that out to a capital fund and make some more improvements.
If I like that, $100 is not from 70 to 100, that's, that's okay. You know, it's private people that are renting it and like, to write, to take that extra money and put it in there for some other stuff. But I suggested 70, say Shane come up with a better idea, I think, at 100. Does anybody else have anything you'd like to add on that?
So we raise the dailies on each category by 100 bucks and then the weeklies, it looks like they're just times them by five, so if we keep that same ratio.
Can we go to 15, 17, 50 and 25?
Yep.
When you consider that the quality of the facility, the size of the facility and what kind of services are available up there for a large group, this is still a very reasonable cost.
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
There is a motion to approve.
I have a question. When do you want to start this? We've already got, quite a few of our campers are already reserved for this summer. Like I said, Courtney starts real early in the season, so I'm gonna need an effective date.
I don't think we can change it on people that have already booked with us, but I think any new bookings.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
So it meant your motion to include the change?
Yeah, I would say that we don't, we don't change any current bookings, but it would be my wish to start this immediately on any new bookings.
Well, let's start with that.
Okay, motion by Shane and the second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Action anonymous? We'll get you right out of here.
Yeah, Bill, so.
$100 daily?
So 100 on each of the dailies and then that number just times by five.
Yeah, so 500 on each of the weeklies.
Oh, okay.
Five hundred and seventy.
Thank you.
Yeah, 15, 100, 17, 50 and 25 for weeklies.
Got it?
I got it.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Item B on your side, you, Bill, and Chad away here is discussion of possible action, approval of an agreement between White Pine County and Sunrise Engineering Incorporated for the engineering and technical services for the senior center, any amount not to exceed $94,000. Any questions on that? Mike?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pretty good, we got to be close, we're right on time.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you, Bill.
So the 10 o'clock time, which is the, 10 o'clock, page three. The 10 AM is Main Street Committee update. Item one is a discussion update on the progress of the Main Street Committee. Caroline MacIntosh and Kyle, Caroline's on the phone, Kyle's here in person.
And I believe Nathan Robinson's also on the phone as well.
And I just wanted to say that when we were going through our budget workshop, that there was a request by the board wanting to hear more about where the funds are going and the whys, the wherefores and.
And that is understandable. I know that this document was sent in via email, they have it all, okay, cool, if anybody in the audience wants to check it right here. So in, in short, what does Main Street do with the money that's allocated from, to them from the county? They turn it into more money. Main Street is eligible for grants at the state, state federal level that cities and counties municipalities are not eligible for. So essentially, in short, in one sentence, what they do is they turn your, your money into more money. And what happened in the last year, they received roughly $50,000 in grants that they used, the money that you allocated to them to go ahead and leverage that for MASH. And so I think any organization that's turned money into more money right there is doing a good job and is being financially responsible. What they've done with that money and what we've been able to do, and, and I'm speaking as a board member, I'm not speaking as a director of tourism right now, I'm speaking as a member of the organization. And to be anecdotal for a second, I've been in the tourism industry for 20 years, before that, if you count my schooling, and I've worked with a lot of different organizations and a lot of different municipalities. I've never seen a group organize, mobilize and start making an impact in their community as quick as the White Pine Main Street community has in this last year. I don't mean to read all of these to you, what they've accomplished, you see it's a very, very long list. But some of the things that I'm kind of most proud of is starting out with the logo and style guide, which you're seeing in the directional signs that have been placed downtown, which you're also gonna be seeing up on the trails, because the Main Street Committee is partnering with different organizations to have that logo and that branding, not just in the downtown as a, as a trailhead, but also up in the mountains for recognizing branding for the OHV and the non-motorized trail. They've created social media accounts in Facebook and Instagram and are active on that. They've partnered with me at the tourism office to help host the 4th of July Versilcone Convention breakfast, which last year was bigger and better thanks to the White Pine Main Street, free mimosas and Bloody Marys, we had waffles, it was just a, a good time. And they're actually partnering with me again this year as well as the all-class reunion to make sure that we've got more room, more food, more activities going on at the convention center during the breakfast. This year we did, oh, in addition, the mixer, the games after the 4th of July parade, I thought that was very hometown, you know, I thought that was cool, the tug wars, the egg toss, the balloons, things like that, keeping the community in the downtown after the parade was done. The mixer on Main, trying to recruit businesses and get more businesses into the vacant buildings, they were successful in that. The 448 Altman where we did have our first mixer on Main now has an occupant in there. So we were looking at other vacant buildings in the downtown to do the same thing. Just recently, we went through the survey where White Pine had the highest rate of responses than any other rural community in Nevada at 401. And that turned into the transformational strategies. The big thing, again, I feel like I am reading this, so I apologize, but the film festival that just happened, that we were able to sneak in right before all of this started falling apart, was a huge success, huge recognition at the state level, governor's office on economic development, the film office, as well as just being a, a community pride event where we celebrated local directors and films that were made here in the area. This is an event that is already working on going after money for year two, grants, things like that. There's been an inventory of vacant properties in the area that we're working with city and county on coming policies to try to fill those or at least rehab them, as well as beautification projects like removing of old signs and poles for businesses who no longer exist. In the future, Main Street is applying for, currently right now, they've got a grant out with Travel Nevada for $10,000 for larger signs, directional signs to be placed outside of the downtown area at the entrance ways and the corridors of the community to try to direct people to the downtown as well as all the other attractions, including the parks and everything like that. There's also a grant right now out for Travel Nevada for the film festival. That, even when we were going through this list, I forgot a couple of things that we had done over the last year, just because 365 days, you check so many things off the list, you hit it, you forget it and you move on to the next thing. But like I said, I've never worked with a group that has mobilized so quickly and started making an impact to the, the look, the feel, the pride and the economic value of the downtown. So in the future, they're working on trail maps, kiosks in various locations throughout the downtown, including Broadbent Park, as well as the lot across from Sports World. And we're looking at trail kiosks also in county parks like, or in parks outside of the area like Steptoe, the train, the fairgrounds. Again, the master plan is, is to make all of these areas recreational corridors and places for motorized and non-motorized users to access our trails. From a beautification standpoint, there's a grant out for full window clean, so those are the, the stickers that go on windows and we are doing large designs of our attractions and those will be placed on vacant buildings. So instead of looking at empty buildings, you'll be looking at gorgeous pictures of Cave Lake, Mount Wheeler, the horse races, you know, things that when people drive through town, they become advertisements as opposed to just looking at blight. All the planters that are in the downtown, if you can picture block two where the art bank and everything like that is with the mosaic tiles and the dish flowers, we have contracted with the NDF Honor Camp to go ahead and title all of the planters in the downtown area, all of them will be unique and different, it'll be a large scale art project. And then placing, I guess what I would call non-organic art in those planters so that the city does not have the expense of taking care of the flowers or it becomes a hodgepodge of dead stuff. As you're driving downtown, it becomes again a large scale public art project that beautifies the downtown. So that again is, is in the works, the, the tiles, the dish plate planters, also repainting all of the benches. Right now, if things go well, all of this is gonna be done before the 4th of July. I mean, we, all of these deadlines are working towards the all-class reunion to make sure that all of the work that you guys are putting into it is, is realizing the community has a really great time. There'll be more mixers on Main to encourage vacant, filling the vacant retail buildings and then working with property owners and city redevelopment funds to work on incentives for facade improvements, trying to get that going. So I think the big thing again, like I said, is just partnering with the all-class reunion for the 4th of July to make sure that it's set, silver top and breakfast, games in the park. And then all the additional social media advertising and help that they've done with the all-class reunion, get the mailers out, design work and things like that. Sniplumna project, and again, I want to thank you all for prioritizing it as a group, big giant vision, but again, that was Main Street who came up with the Broadbent Park aspect of that and worked with the county on combining that. Working on a business network, not just to help with the impacts of COVID-19, but to be a support for the downtown businesses, kind of like a downtown business organization. And then the last thing that is, what you'll see implemented this summer is all of the murals, we went around and we recorded the stories of each one of those murals as well as the homes of the Renaissance Village. And those online snippets will be available through the website and through cell phone tours. So when people come in, they'll actually, they can read the sign on the mural describing it, but they're gonna get Glenn Terry's voice telling them the rest of the story. And they can do that really at any point in time during the day. So again, as you can see, I mean, in short, it's, it's taking money and turning it into more money. Tourism Recreation has a line item for Main Street in their budget and I ask that you guys as well continue supporting the Main Street organizations so they can keep up the success of the downtown. You guys have any questions?
Alan? Well, I do.
Yes, sir.
You know, where we're with the budget with the Corona thing and all, all this stuff that's going down and we're looking, we're, we're, we're really looking at our budget for next fiscal year because our revenues, if this continues, our tax money's gonna really start to drop. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we give them $15,000, is that right, Elizabeth?
Correct.
Correct.
$15,000 isn't a lot of money, but we have, we have, we're gonna have to look at every bit of our budget request that we have right now and we're gonna have, we're gonna have less money.
Yep.
We are, and I think everybody knows that. Back to your, your comments on the Sniplumna, this, this commission did approve, that is our number one priority. Now I find out that one of your main things on that was the E.D. Ford building, which has been purchased by a private vendor. A private person has now purchased that, which is part of your, your large scope of your project. And I, I understood what that was, I voted, I voted for it, but these are all things. The main thing is you listen to what we've done with the fire, potential cost in that, all the requests that we have as far as the budget goes, we're gonna have to sharpen our pencil here in the next couple of weeks because we've got a lot of requests and we have to take care of the county first, of course, but I'm not, my main concern with downtown, it has been since day one, is are the owners of the building to step up to the plate and help you guys along the way? And to me, that's, that's a big part of it. For us or you or Main Street America, Ely's downtown, I was raised here, so it's all, it's all good. We got so many vacant buildings up and down that, we got a, what, a six block corridor from Broadbent Park up to, up to the E.D. Ford building. And on each side of the street from Mr. Geno's all the way up, there's nothing open. Coming into town, you've gotta have nothing really till you get to Wilson Basin, you get to the hotel and then, well, so those are things that really concern me as far as our, our, our part of the budget, your 15,000, this commission has approved that and I'm, I'm okay with that. But those are things that we have to address because we're in our budget session and we're gonna be going, really looking at it, a special meeting hopefully next week to look at the budget only and get a preliminary budget done by the 15th of April and on the 25th. So am I gonna vote no on it? I didn't say I was gonna vote no on it, but I'm, I'm asking those questions because I think they're valid questions. I'm the only one that's asking the question, the rest couldn't do that, but we're all for Ely because we're all for White Pine County, but let's hope that we're supposed to be real about this.
Well, no, thank you and I understand it, I mean, I, I respect the county's, you know, trying to slimmer its budget, I know private businesses are doing the same thing, I know tourism's doing the same thing because we're in the same boat with our budget as well. The one thing that I would encourage you guys to look at and consider is, is does your investment suck money or does it make more money? You know, anytime you've got money making more money and making the investments into the downtown that are gonna ultimately result in more money, more businesses moving in, more businesses coming onto the tax roll. You know, I, I think we've all done a good job of identifying the problems, I'm very proud of the group of people that have organized to address them. So many of you have come to the meetings, many of you are on the board, many of you work together. But Richard, I agree with you, that's, that's how we're gonna revitalize downtown, is everybody pulling together, the business owners, the volunteers, the city government, the state, all of it together and I feel like we're on a really, really good path. So again, I thank you for your concerns, I, I hope we can work together and continue to address them.
I'm kind of on the same lines as, as Richard, as my thinking is, I don't know how many businesses, more businesses we're gonna have shut after this. So I might rather be along the lines of having the 15 and, you know, some sort of property tax or something that we could do something to help these poor guys out with. I mean, I don't know if we're gonna have another two or three restaurants shut down or, you know, I don't, this is such an open box right now, I, I don't know if we can go one way or the other.
Nathan would like to speak for a second. Hopefully he has questions.
Go ahead, Charles.
I'll note.
Okay, we have someone online, who is it, Nathan?
Yes, the mayor.
This is Nathan, excuse me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I would just like to kind of speak at this from the city side, I mean, all of us who have grown up here and lived here and have family ties here and all of these and through downturns and mine closures and all sorts of things and, and we'll make it through this too, but I, I'd just like to echo what Kyle was saying, that this money is money that we spend that will bring more business into our community. I know businesses are having a hard time being a business owner, I, this, it's hit, it's hitting everybody, whether you're open or not. And just looking at how we spend our money and making sure we're spending it in a way that brings more money in, I think is what we need to be looking at. The city will have this on their agenda for the ninth and we will be doing our best, may I will be doing my best to make sure this gets to the city as well to fund this important program. And there are a lot of business owners that building on the downtown that have made improvements and are looking for tenants. There are still empty buildings and there are still buildings for sale, but I think we're headed in the right direction and the momentum that I would like to keep going very much and I think it's the momentum we need to keep going. Because with this downturn, we need this more than ever, I think, and that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Okay, Lori?
No, go, go ahead, now be after Ian.
So I, I know that, you know, I'm a big advocate, we've already asked Elizabeth to give us some numbers based on that mine closure, we're gonna work our budget kind of around those numbers, so I'm looking at tightening things up, but this is an investment. If we don't, if we don't invest in, in letting these people do what they're doing, then that. If we don't, if we don't invest in, in letting these people do what they're doing, then that continues to crumble. And this community gets more and more difficult to, uh, let alone survive in little issues like the virus. But just long-term economic development becomes more and more difficult because looking at bringing, um, other industries here. The more they come in and see a dead downtown, the dead area, um, the more that just speaks to them not wanting to bother. And for a lousy 15 grand, I think that's a very, very small investment, uh, for what we're getting out of it. And if it was a group of people that were wasting everybody's time and just had a nice little social club and felt good about what they were doing, I might feel differently, but, um, with Kyle involved and, and the others, like they, they're, uh, they're doing meaningful stuff. And, um, it looks like they're not wasting money and not wasting time. And, uh, so I really, I don't hear it as a, as a pitch or a spin when they say this is an investment truly is. It is a, an investment that is yielding a return, that is a long-term, uh, return. And if we need to find 15 grand to cut somewhere else, we'll cut it out postage or something, we can figure that out. But, um, I don't think this is hard to make up anywhere else in the budget.
Maury?
Um, yes, first off, I would, I would like to acknowledge, um, Chairman, that you have a very valid point with the owners stepping up to help with their buildings. I, I mean, you can't discount that. And second, I would like to say, um, Ely is in White Pine County. When people travel through, especially, um, we're in Dot's numbers. Uh, I think it was about approximately 10,000 vehicles a day coming through here. The first place that they're coming through, it, it, the majority of the time will be, uh, Main Street. That said, uh, there's grants that, um, White Pine Main Street can apply for that the counties and the cities can't. Um, Main Street now as of in January is an affiliate level, uh, member, um, with the Nevada Main Street program. So that opens up the door for more funds. Um, you know, the, the, I think that the movement that they're doing, I think that we're just on a verge of having, uh, really having things fall into place. And from the thirty-foot level, I think that, um, if Main Street continues to do what they're doing with our help, I would certainly hate to see them fail because we didn't contribute. The net branches out to the rest of the county, so.
Chairman, you want to say something? Yeah. You know, the, the concern that, that you both voiced about, uh, the, the, the building owners putting the money in. I understand it, but I also understand, you know, running a, a business and finding money to do those kinds of improvements. When you actually have a business running requires a sacrifice somewhere else. But if I own a building that's creating nothing but expense and no revenue at that point, where does that, where do those funds come from? That's, that's the real problem. And that's why I think a, a program like this becomes necessary. Because you've got people that, that have got buildings that have lost tenants and they are, those buildings are creating no revenue, just expenses. And so we've got to find a way to boost up and create demand for those buildings. And, uh, and then they can work out creative agreements with people that lease them and whatnot to, to include improvements and, and some things. But right out of the gate to go to a guy that owns an empty building and say, you know, if we're going to do this, you got to throw 50 grand out front. Well, where does that 50 grand come from when he's had it sitting empty for five years with no revenue? Um, and, and so if we can at least enable him to be part of, in a, in a program that creates a, a, some kind of demand for that building, then he can work out with, with whoever he leases that building to, to, to start to work on those improvements. And, and I think, uh, so I think we do need to keep going forward because we could say all along that, that maybe we can't afford this now, but this downtown drags down, as, as long as it, as it's declining, drags down every other business area in this community. To, to have a, a weak Main Street like this makes us all suffer. It makes, it, it, it just creates a bad focal point. And so if we can get this improved and we can start growing some interest and start seeing businesses open up, it's going to improve the appearance of our community, it's going to create a drive to, to come into our community and open businesses.
Uh, I have one thing I was just going to say to Kyle and, uh, Mayor, can you hear me? Okay? Okay, um, something that I didn't see on there that, uh, maybe you guys could put a lot of focus into and maybe just really organize is being really, really proactive at recruiting, um, specifically, not just any business that wants to come and open up, but looking at places like, um, what they've got in the, the, uh, the Boardwalk in Sacramento, in Virginia City. Starting to interface with that industry of those knickknack shops that are just selling tourist trap stuff, but they're fun. It's a fun environment to go and walk around in. If I think if we were proactive in organizing, maybe working with, um, the, the business owners, the, or excuse me, the building owners to maybe standardize some of their rental agreements and the fees that they're asking. And just make a proactive effort to go, okay, go to these people and say, hey, we've got some space available. What, what's it look like for you to open a branch out here or who do you know that would want to open a similar business? I think if we start moving that.
Well, and that, and that is part of the plan because that, that transformational strategies survey that went out, that over 400 people from the county, you know, answered, they answered with what, what businesses would you support? What would bring you downtown? What hours can you actually come down? I think that's the biggest thing right there is, is that the business owners are open at their convenience. As opposed to the convenience of the community and, and the visitors. So there, there's a lot of work that's to be done, but I think that survey, uh, that went out and the results of that, um, you know, things like, uh, stores that support outdoor recreation, tourism-related shops, which are your knickknacks, t-shirts, things like that. Um, those are things that the community said, we will support. You know, we will support kids clothing, we will support shoes, we will, we will come down after work.
A bookstore.
Bookstore, you know, so I think that, that survey was a necessary piece of the puzzle, um, that Main Street was able to, to make happen. Um, they were able to middleman that. And so we have that, we have that information now to move forward onwards before we didn't.
You know, the one thing I would like to tie home, the one that drives me crazy is businesses that don't operate on their posted hours. If I walk up to a store that says it's open till seven and they went home at six because it was slow and that door is locked, I don't go back.
Correct.
It's, uh, it's so important, even then, I mean, everyone's thought you're going to bite the bullet, you're going to pay a couple hours labor for no customers. But it's so important, if you're going to post those hours in the door, that that door be unlocked.
Do you wouldn't believe how many times I see people standing outside of some of our most popular downtown businesses rattling the door midday? You know, and right, see one of these and get back in the car and go.
Well, thank you for meeting here.
I know, I thank all of you for your continued support, we really do appreciate it, thank you.
One thing you need to know is we're not slamming the door shut on this, you understand, really does work with the question. This virus and the money we're losing and we're losing right now. I was down last night, the jailhouse is completely shut down. It's completely shut down. Uh, there's going to be other restaurants and businesses where they passed a package this morning or last night. So that's going to help, but it's really looking at the long term. But there's support all the way, including myself, for this downtown project, but there's budgetary items. And you're right on the return for money, but I just want to make sure that you understand this commission is not slammed. We're, we're going through, this is a public hearing, we're in our budget season and just to let you know that we're, we're looking at everything.
Eyes wide open, Richard, I fully understand.
Please don't take it as like you heard from everybody here and everybody wants you to.
No, I, I, I feel your support and what feels your support, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So, Richard.
Kyle.
We have two people that would like to speak, we have Pantella and a little bit of me to have for comment.
Okay.
Pantella, four lanes downtown.
Okay, this is a public comment. This is a public comment, I'm sorry. We have a waiting for a comment at the end of the meeting. We, so we stressed that at the start of the meeting.
I think, I, I mean, I'll come across the line and do it, but I mean, I think it's just important to also everyone to keep back in their mind. If we're shut down in June trying to get our budget together, we're just going to have to roll up the punches. So, I mean, let's do what we can, but just have that asterisk there that we are living in an unknown time.
So because this was stated at the start of the meeting, I don't need to be rude, but public comment is at the beginning of the meeting and the end of the meeting. And we've got several other items going on here. We heard a very good report from Kyle, Caroline spoke in public comment. Any other public comment, we'll be glad to listen to it at the end of the meeting. Because public comment will reopen at the end of the meeting. And I hope you can understand that we, we're stressing that because of the distances and everything else we've got as far as the people in the building. So I'm sorry, but we're not going to take public comment, we will be, uh, taking public comment at the end of the meeting. Okay, right now, we're going to, right, a minute or two before the 10:30, we haven't had a break. Let's take a quick five-minute break and then we'll come back to the 10:30 item on, uh, page three. Okay. We are now on the, uh, page three, item E, 10:30 Public Hearings. Item one is public hearing, discussion for possible action. White Pine County Board of Commissioners will take public comment and consider the approval of the petition for vacation or abandonment of road or easement. The three properties to be considered are, one, the alley between APN 005-114-05. Item two, 005-114-06. And 005-114-04. And 005-114-03. Two, the road easement of block 24 on Nettie Avenue, AKA CR 610. Abutting APN 005-114-05. And 005-114-06. And three, the road easement between APN number 005-114-06. And APN 005-115-01 on Ely Street, all located in Baker, Nevada. The petitioner is Gateway Accommodations LLC, RPC Chairman John Churchillis and David Sterling. Are they here? Does anybody have, uh, any comments or anything on this is a public hearing? And we're going to possibly take action. Mike, have you heard anything on this or does anybody?
Uh, it's very good, all right.
It, I've submitted comments, it's probably the fire chief should have and I'm sure Brad submitted comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, then.
The findings of fact.
Listening to that and, and, and looking at what's in the, in the backup to comments, does anybody have a problem with this? Or would we, uh?
I do.
You have a question?
I have a problem with it.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to know why it was being abandoned. Um, I, I kind of hesitate on anything where there's something that's going to be, um, landlocked. And that it also, um, so far as emergency services access. It says that EMS access to abutting and non-abutting properties will be altered and possibly made inaccessible. So I think it needs to be looked at.
Okay, uh, Bill, do you have?
My comments was it looked like to me you would landlock a, a parcel that would not have access to it.
Okay.
And I think I put that in my comments as well.
Do we know, do we know if they own the parcel or is it someone else?
They do not. They do not. And with, I agree somehow on these applications, we need to have something on there, the reason why. Because if the reason is to get more property, which I, you just don't know is when you're doing these finding of facts, what, what the intent is.
Okay. Because of the questions that are being raised about legitimately if you landlocking property, I don't think we, and you guys can do what you want, but I, I don't think we can take an action on this till we have some definitive plans or, or.
Does it?
Planning to wish there somebody come forward. George, you got your hand up? This is public con, uh, public hearing, so you can make a comment.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I've been a fire inspector, safety inspector, security inspector. When you landlock the property like this and for no apparent reason, uh, you have a problem. Your, uh, RPC chairman should be here to explain part of it, if nothing else. And I don't know if that building inspector ever made it back in the Urida, he should also be here telling you what this is all about. If you're landlocking somebody in with no good excuse, let alone a good excuse, they should be turned down. How's that person going to access their property? How are they going to get, uh, any kind of utilities? How are they going to develop it? They're going to be paying taxes for being landlocked, that's wrong. You can't make a person's property worthless and you would be doing that in this particular case. I believe in Baker, but I don't want to see it in Baker, let alone in Ely. Thank you.
Thank you. Listening to Bill, George, Maury?
I believe, Mike, if I'm correct, didn't they do an action that the regional planning commission has no authority to give away county? And would that be this particular instance, so this will not go before the RPC? Is that correct?
Uh, it still should have gone before them for recommendations and findings, you know, and then they make a recommendation to our board. Does that make sense?
Just, I know, no meeting.
Yeah, so, look, um, I think you can have a motion to, um, you had better, if you don't, if the board doesn't want to pass it, you had better have a motion for denial, um, and then amend your motion for additional findings and information. I mean, let's just get more information, that's where it's, you know, send back the RPC for a presentation on what this is all about. And the adjoining landowners and their opinions on this, and we just don't know enough about it. Uh, when these things come in, I don't have a lot of comments on them because there's no material from either surrounding the landowners or motive or what the intention is or anything, so.
And maybe we can modify this finding of facting to include a little bit more that the building, uh, and planning department goes through.
Brad did not submit comments with that, I'm assuming, I can look at the backup material?
He did, he denied it.
I'd like to comment.
He did and you.
He recommended what?
Denial.
So your building inspector also recommended denial.
So.
Well, and Mount Wheeler Powers on here, they had questions so far as.